Cool. Alright, here we are. Welcome to tunnel meeting number 164. It's September 16th, 2025. And today, we are being joined by Abdou Bassid, Guillaume, Malik, Alfred, Ayomi, Daniel, Jeffrey, Rems, and Vanessa and Vassu. Thanks for being here. And yeah, as you can see on the screen, a short outline, relatively concise agenda. We start off with a couple of mentions. And then Abdou Bassid will tell us a little about the deep funding community website and its feeds and how we can join in on the fund there. And if there's any time remaining after that, we can have some open topics and I do want to reserve, it can be a couple of minutes only, um, to plan the session on BGI 25 later this week. But I figured it would be good to, well, make a first check on the, on that journey, Tony. Alright, so first, a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. We're a group of like-minded people quite in tune with the mission and vision of Singularity Net and its ecosystem. And I want to help and contribute to building beneficial AGI. And we have a wide range of self-organizing workgroups that work on this. So if you're interested in joining out, do hop onto our Discord server. We do have a workgroup that fits your needs and interests. So yeah, you'll find the getting started section there and how to join, I should say, how to join section. That will explain you how to join. Alright, with that out of the way, a couple of mentions. Um, first, I figured it would be good to, um, share the updated timelines on the consent process. Um, if, hmm, yeah, it should be, yeah, this gives the right overview. Um, basically, the deadline is not yesterday, but tomorrow. The very first deadline changed 48 hours. And yeah, you can find this. I'm not gonna read over the whole page, don't worry. Um, basically, it's a relatively short version this time. It's only one round of consent. And we will be using the governance dashboard. And yeah, what more is there to say without actually reading it out? Um, Yeah, this is basically it. I think, um, I'm not sure if there's actually an updated graphic of this, uh, to be honest.
No, there's not, I'm afraid. It's all text.
Oh, that's, that's fine. I mean, that works, hopefully. And yeah, and we, we have the very last date, um, right at the end of the quarter. So that hopefully we can wrap up the whole process before the start of Q4. And, um, yeah, there we go. Uh, I wanted to give a quick shout out to Leandro from RND and Latin Guild. Um, he actually, before the community forum was published, managed to find it and post a guide on there on how to integrate ASI1, the LLM model, um, with NextGS API. And yeah, it was just cool to see somebody stepping up and doing it on a place which is definitely intended for it. But so far has not been quite, um, yeah, we didn't quite make noises on it yet. So yeah, it's cool to see to see him step up there. Uh, I also wanted to give a little update on, um, today's governance workgroup session where we discussed the temporary workgroup for Q4 on fundraising efforts. And yeah, basically you can find, um, the, the full list of that workgroup. I don't have it top of mind, but it's in the decisions to be made channel. Because part of this process was also to, um, suggest the workgroup members. And then to leave it for a week of potential objections, if there are any. And so yeah, do check it out. It's on the decisions to be made channel. And also, I think we learned today during governance that we might need some tooling for actually selecting a subgroup of people if there's more than, um, in this case, there was five people, uh, five spots in the workgroup. And we had, um, eight people interested and that took us a bit longer than it should have. Let's put it like that. But it was, it was, um, yeah, lessons were learned in that sense. And then, um, moving to the last mention, um, moving to Guillaume on RND Guild and the BMB hack. I'm not even sure if it's BMB hack or Hackathon, but it is a Hackathon. So Guillaume, if you want, please give us a little update there.
Yeah, um, thank you, Pete. Yeah, I'm gonna going back one step and also big shout out to Leandro for this contribution for ASI Dev. Still looking forward to push big communications on this. Uh, so yeah, um, would be great for everyone also to recognize that online and help with sharing, uh, posts and everything that we'll probably push that later. Um, but yeah, going back to, uh, the strategy of, uh, building in Hackathons with our stack. That's the whole purpose. Um, and, uh, and also going back a little bit. A couple of weeks ago, with Basu that I see here, he joins, talking about, uh, I would love to learn how to start using this. So yeah, we're gonna workshop the thingy, okay? So probably we're gonna start educating, uh, every core contributor here should be able to learn how to integrate or build, uh, agents in our stack. So, um, yeah, and that comes from earlier discussion on the channel, uh, we have with some members. So yeah, um, this time, we're gonna, uh, engage with the BMB hack, definitely. Uh, let me see if I can share my screen. I'm gonna try to go. I'll allow multiple presenters to share. Okay, that will be me. Thank you, Pete. Not the whole thing. Yeah, I think it's this one. Okay, so month, I think at the beginning of the year, this started, um, and deadline had been pushed back a couple of times. So this gave us the opportunity, okay, to participate on this. Uh, basically, BMB Devcom, uh, community is, uh, have been pushing this, uh, BMB hack, focus on AI, Deppin, uh, DSI and, well, what you guys see here on screen, um. I think we weren't there yet, ready for, for this, uh, but as everyone knows, we have been building agents for the last month, participating in two Hackathons here in, uh, from Latam, one the ICP, the other one in Alef. And, uh, so results was good. So once we validate the strategy, um, and the experience for us to also get involved with the tool, uh, yeah, so we're gonna keep going with it. Um, so what we have decided to build, uh, but yeah, let's talk a little bit about this. So the ASI is put in 10 grants and this also is a way to fund ourselves and operations, you know? We nail it. Some good friend in the, in the judging team is looking this later. You can use some good help on that. Um, um, but yeah, 10 grants, I think five for the first prize. Uh, and the, so the agent is already built and deployed. Um, we are, we are linking and connecting all the dots to give this agent more capabilities, okay? But it's a liquidity staking token, uh, agent, okay? So repo is already up. Uh, I'm gonna be sharing later on this on the channel so everybody can check. And, and yeah, the thing is already deployed. Um, and yeah, all those three interactions have been ourselves. So, um, so yeah, another hack, um, and also what we have been doing is to, um, after closing each iteration, we share, we create a video, okay? Um, and it has been a test. And also the other cool thing about regional expansion that we kind of use this at experimental labs that for staff, at least that have been the result for staff that, and we validate that something work here in Latam or in African Guild and then we kind of are able to duplicate the effort here, you know? Without duplicating resources, we kind of, we will be able to adapt. Uh, so, no say, hijo. Sorry, my kid is looking for energy. Two black skis thing. But, um, so, so yeah, I think it's not only learning, participating, promoting our stack, um, we, we need to make this or replicate this with the RND global and also the content we are creating. Why not use it, translate it to English or different languages? Um, so kind of, uh, last week, we shared the ICP, how to create, it become a video tutorial on how to create an agent, okay? And integrate it. So, so we are kind of, um, doing this stuff that, you know, results are being organic also. And also Leandro, um, is a, is a member that we, we onboarded in Latam and he came from the community. Uh, and from last year's Solana's hack. So, and since then till today, the, the, the tool, the stack have been evolving, you know, pretty exponentially. It's a really cool tool. Um, and everyone here should use it, you know? Um, and more, being able to build agents. So, I'm looking forward to, yeah, to, to coordinate efforts with video and, uh, with education guilds to be able to translate this experience and resulting to everyone here. And, and yeah, let's keep building and let's keep hacking and let's keep, because it is a great marketing strategy too. So it kind of ended up being something that more than we expected. Um, and yeah, how we, how we translate that into our global program, um, and, and this experience also was, we were able to build and integrate the agent with our governance. She's already there. Uh, so pretty cool, pretty cool. And so proud of what we're doing, excited of what we can do as a, as a bigger family. And turn this is to, uh, you're sharing the knowledge of, you know, the results of, of this initiative. So, yeah, we'll be sharing later on. The thing is not having too much capabilities right now because we just deployed, but, um, but yeah, the cool stuff coming. Okay, thanks, Pete.
Well, thank you for sharing. Awesome. Um, yeah, and about, uh, sharing, it's a nice little bridge, uh, I guess to the, uh, next topic. Uh, because we're being joined by Abdou Bassid from Deep Funding Marketing Circle. And yeah, to share about, uh, the community website and its, um, its feed functionality, which we as ambassadors can also use. So yeah, Abdou Bassid, welcome. Um, if you want, the floor is yours.
Alright, uh, uh, thank you, Peter. Thank you, uh, Guillaume, Malik, Vani. Thank you very much for, uh, making this possible. Uh, special thanks to you, Vani. Uh, I welcome everybody and I thank you guys for doing a wonderful work. I like what you guys are doing here and it's a pleasure to be presenting here today. Uh, um, I am Abdou Aman Abdou Bassid from Deep Funding Marketing Circle. As one of the, uh, three coordinators from there. And of course, we have been shadowed with the responsibility to, uh, make plans on how we can, uh, showcase the launch of, uh, the funded deep feed to our greater communities. But in our process of planning, we recognize the Singularity Net Ambassador as one of the key player that we want to bring in into the platform as our early adopters, or let me say, pioneers. So, and that's, uh, the reason why I am here today. And I appreciate once again for giving us the privilege to share with you. And, uh, without further ado, I know I want to believe every single person here, uh, know, uh, what we do at Deep Funding. But for the avoidance of doubt, uh, Deep Funding is a decentralized ecosystem, uh, from Singularity Net, as far as I know, uh, that was shadowed with the responsibility of overseeing grant, uh, program for building decentralized AI solutions. So from there, uh, Deep Funding has gone beyond, uh, that, uh, integrating a lot of initiatives. And which, uh, what I'll be presenting today is one of those things. So we have gone to realize that we, as a community of AI innovators, a lot of things are happening almost every single day that need to keep ourselves updated constantly. And if everybody will agree with me, uh, we have, uh, a lot of different social platforms that we engage with. We, uh, let me see, the like of X, Facebook, Instagram, or whatever the case may be. So a lot of information have been saturated there and a lot of, I don't want to use the word, but misinformation and all of that are actually there. So we are very concerned about that. And, uh, this thought comes around that can we have a social platform that can connect people of the same common interest? Uh, as far as decentralized AI is concerned. And that was how, um, I think, uh, Deep Feed was come to realization. So Deep Feed is, uh, a kind of a social platform that was built for internal communication for deep funding and, uh, Singularity Net's ecosystem and perhaps, uh, by extension, the future could be, uh, open to the public people for consumption. But for now, we are keeping it, uh, internal to connect among ourselves, share updates about anything decentralized AI or any emerging technologies. So, uh, we view that as a kind of a social platform that connects innovators, builders and AI researchers together and exactly what we are presenting today. So why do we think of a Singularity Net Ambassador to be a part of our early pioneer? Uh, we understand that you have been doing a lot of work. Let me say, as an individual, it has been very, very, uh, difficult for me to catch up on all things that is happening in Singularity Net. And, uh, if we can get a Singularity Net Ambassador on our platform. So if any, I thought some updates are being put there that I leave from you guys, uh, our community as well can be, uh, up to date on all apps and all happening in the Singularity Net ecosystem. And from there, you can have a kind of a collaborative and symbiotic, uh, experience. So we know what is happening there and for the fact that you guys are updating us. And perhaps you know some things that are happening in the deep funding as well, while we put our own update on the platform. So that was one of the reasons why we think it is very important that we reach out to, uh, Esnet Ambassador to be part of the early, uh, user of the platform. So, and another, uh, important thing that we see to, uh, reach out to you is that we have a target, like more like we are exploring the, 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 the platform. We want to collect feedback and we don't just want to learn to the public space. So can we have a kind of a, some number of people, they can help us, uh, go through the platform, make some kind of interaction with the platform and then give us feedback on what should be added, what should be needed? Or perhaps from your experience as a gap between the community and the Singularity Net ecosystem. Uh, let me put that word. So, uh, there may be a lot of things that we are not thinking that, that can be put on the platform. So we consider your experience in this kind of, uh, feed to help us, uh, uh, explore the platform and give some feedback if needed or necessary. So, uh, that was exactly what we are presenting to, to, to you. And, uh, I think, uh, I don't want to take more time. That was why I'm making it very short. And I didn't even bother to prepare a slide. Apology for that. Uh, so that is that about that. I want to stop here to probably ask if there is any questions, uh, before I proceed to share my screen to show, uh, the, the website and take us through.
From my side, it's very clear. I do think there's a lot of potential, um, in a way, um, you mentioned like, uh, you mentioned like keeping it somewhat internal, but at the same time, from ambassador perspective, or at least from my personal perspective, uh, the people building on deep funding, um, yeah, that's exactly what we need, right? That's, that's, that's really what the ecosystem needs, builders. So yeah, to me, that's, that makes perfect sense to stay closely informed of each other's work. So to me, this is, uh, yeah, makes perfect sense.
Thank you very much, uh, Peter. Alright, uh, let me proceed with, uh, sharing my screen and to take us through the, uh, platform interface. Can you see my screen, please?
Uh, yes, we see now the zoom tab of the project.
Okay, I'll follow this for that. Okay, uh, here we, we go. Sorry. Okay, I, I am logging to the, uh, platform already and, uh, if you are, if you have, or let me see, let me log out first. If you are part of, uh, Deep Funding Community earlier before now, so you, uh, don't need to register a new. The moment you log into the website, so you will see this, uh, new, uh, tag as a new feature that has been added to the website. So the moment you click on this explore, it takes you to the, uh, to the, uh, deep feed interface directly. So there are no much posts, uh, here already because it's a new platform. And that's the reason why we are reaching out to, uh, you people to help us, uh, put a lot of good informations on the platform before we go public, uh, to invite our community member. So that by the time they come, they will have a lot of things to engage and interact with. So we have all these, uh, platform, uh, all these contents that have been automatically updated and so created by myself and as a member of the marketing circle. So this is how, just like we have our LinkedIn, uh, let me see, that was the picture. But then we want to, uh, we want to make it focus on internal communication, just like we have, uh, milestone updates, proposals, ideas, team rounds, RFP and events. But we are not limiting, uh, things to that. Well, let me see, all these tags are possibly meant for all the information that will be pushing from the side of the deep funding. The basic advantage of this tool and what we actually wanted to make, uh, people to make sense of it is that to share information about current trending in either Web3, uh, uh, Singularity Net ecosystem, AI ecosystem at large, decentralized AI ecosystem and all of that. So it's a, an evolving platform. And definitely we have, uh, we'd like you to help us, uh, exploit it. So I want to log in. If you are a member of Deep Funding before now, that you've interacted with the official website, you have a, um, uh, you have, uh, this, you sign up before on the official website. So you don't need to register a new to access this, uh, feature. So all you need to sign up with your, with the same, uh, information that you used to register initially on the official website. So you can make a post, just like you want to make a post on Twitter or, uh, your LinkedIn. So exactly what we're trying to achieve. That is how, uh, this works. Also, another important advantage of this is that just for instance, you want to actually apply for deep funding grants. And, uh, perhaps you, uh, you are looking into connecting with people. Let me say, but eventually you have an idea, you don't have a team of people that you want to actually work with as far as your idea is concerned. Deep Funding has helped in this very regard to set up your profile with standard, uh, uh, a variable minimum to showcase your skills, all things that you need, your GitHub, LinkedIn and X for easy, uh, for easy collaboration between individuals uh, among the, uh, within the ecosystem. So I'm still here to fill up my, uh, background here, which is very, very, uh, possible for any single individual, every single individual to do. So with this, the more, we believe that the more people, uh, uh, interact or engage with the platform, the more, uh, connected people can become when it comes to this collaborative, uh, experience. So we have that very, uh, painting picture as well, that. Okay, you wanna say something?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so we have that in mind as well to, to, uh, for ease of collaborations and all. So people can just come on the platform. If you only have idea, you don't have, uh, a technical people or a researcher, or whatever the case may be. So our objective is to bring, uh, professional researchers, uh, AI builders, machine learning engineers into the platform. So you can reach out to them for collaborative advantage. You share your idea with them on the platform or perhaps directly, uh, uh, on the platform. Yeah, we have this feature as well that connects, uh, people. If eventually you want to share a kind of, uh, personalized DM messages, you don't want to put things on the social platform. You can actually, uh, click on this, uh, function and it will take you through our public matter most, uh, uh, public matter most, uh, and like you can have that very opportunity to connect with people directly and share whatever things that you want to discuss about. So also, yeah, this feature allows me for every idea that I propose in deep funding. You can choose to actually let people know of this or perhaps you make them eating whatever information that you want to let people see. You have the flexibility to do that. I think, uh, all the features are here. Yes, it's another feature, how to manage whatever content you want people to interact or see from whatever you are doing. So you have this, or you have all this history if you are a member of Deep Funding before and if any of these issues has happened. So you can choose to hide them or you display them. I ordered projects. If you have any order project before, you can let people see that or you don't want them to see. The proposal as well. So this is not comprises of all proposals you have submitted, whether, uh, funded or not funded. If you want people to see that so that they can probably, I don't know. It depends on what you think. But in my own case, I, I can believe that people might probably want to see how much experience I have as far as deep funding, uh, engagement is concerned. Or I want to, I want to let people see the people that I've submitted in the previous time. The same thing goes to the RFP idea. So whatever RFP idea that you submitted, all those things, uh, will be attached to your profile and it can actually let people see that or perhaps not. Your contribution as well. There's a particular question that on the platform, let me go back. I think, um, yeah, so the dev are still working on this. Uh, I don't know how much they want to. We are proposing a lot of things to them that I wouldn't give more detail, that I can't give more details because we are still, uh, contemplating on what should be done and not and what not. So this contribution will actually be of value to every single individual that, uh, that are engaging on the platform. And part of what we are proposing from the marketing perspective is that, uh, we want to reward people for their engagement. But what the reward will look like or what it will be, so we are here to decide on that. It's still on discussion. So we have this very particular function as well, a feature as well, that let us know how much people are more engaged on the platform and how, uh, connected, uh, connected people are becoming. So a lot of other things, uh, that are still in development or that are not, that are yet to be agreed on. So, uh, that is that about the feed. And, uh, we are requesting from you that you, uh, join us to be part of the first pioneer launching this, uh, feature at Deep Funding. Uh, so that we will be able to amplify the decentralized AI, uh, ecosystem, a community, Singularity Net and all of that. So, uh, I think, uh, that is that, uh, I want to share as far as the platform is concerned. I want to stop now and perhaps listen to whatever question that you guys have.
Awesome. Thanks a lot for sharing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, I'm, I'm just looking around a little.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 I mean, on my own system.
Okay.
It feels, uh,
I, I dropped a link in the chat for anybody that's interested. Oh, thank you very much, Vani. I've done that. Thank you very much. Thank for the support. So, and that is that about that. Um, a lot of things have been said here and I think, uh, the Hackathon launch, the AI agent you guys are building and all of that, but this kind of information, we want to see them on the feed. And put it there and we see how we can. And put it there and we see how we can market that to our community as well. We pick the in the marketing side. And we get our people that, oh, this is happening from the singularity date. And eventually you want people to participate or whatever is possible, so we can drive them into the platform to see. Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Well, it'll be a bit tricky at the beginning how to, you know, we'll we'll need to find a bit of a balance uh so we don't. Spam with with all kind of more things, but um. That looks very nice to me.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments in the room? Now's the time, or well, you can use the platform, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, um I I want to ask you, okay, I think someone would ask a question.
Yeah, you want me to go for it?
Okay, um good evening, everybody, and thank you, Abdul Basir, for um the presentation. Uh my question is, um when you were presenting your screen, the path of milestone proposals. And the likes, is it that it is for people that have um probably proposed. At the funding and it has been funded. So it's more like um. Um an update of what they've been doing so far. Is that what it means?
Hmm, like uh it could be both. And this is what we are thinking as you get that uh milestone tag, you know, uh there are a lot of awarded projects. As far as the funding is concerned, we have RFP awarded project, we have rounds from rounds. I I think from round one to round four as of now, we have BGI uh Nexus. A first round that people have been awarded for. So people have proposed a milestone for their execution plan and all of that. So deep funding wants to update the entire community to see the number of. Like in total, the number of milestones that have been uh probably. Uh approved or people have submitted and approved. Probably on weekly basis, just for instance, okay, for this week, we receive. So 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 amount of milestones submitted for our from our other team and so so amount of uh milestone has been approved. So uh number of this has been rejected, just to uh give a kind of a view of what is happening in the ecosystem and keep everybody informed. And are aware of uh the happenings as regards the other project. So not necessarily uh. Uh the deliverables from the team. The team can take that as a responsibility uh for themselves. To come on the platform as well and share their wins that today we submitted our milestone, so 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 milestone. And of course, as we approve and we have achieved uh this milestone, this is. So the platform is for everybody to come and do. But from our own side, let me say from the a deep funding perspective as a marketing people. So exactly what we want to do is what I explained first. I don't know if that is clear enough to you.
Yeah, thank you. I understand.
Alright, thank you very much for the question, Ayio. Okay, um I want to ask um a question. Uh Peter.
Of course.
Okay, um we we have a very, we are, we are very, very much ambitious. As far as bringing singularizing an ambassador into the platform and uh we are looking forward to our at least. Our fifty ambassadors from Snet could be on boardage. Uh so but looking from the town. I I I want to be sure if you have not been too much ambitious for that number.
Well, the the most recent count of um core contributors uh is fifty six. So this would be a close to ninety percent score, which. I I'm not sure, I I think I would say that's a little ambitious, to be honest.
Uh uh tha- that's fine, that's fine. Okay, uh in that case, I I'll ask again. How like, how do you think you can reach out to ambassador? What we are thinking before is to. Uh reach out to someone from the ambassador uh team and prevention. Uh we could agree to have the list, like probably emails of the ambassadors. Then we can send them email from our ends and to share details about uh the defeat and all. But I think uh Vani suggested this would should be the greatest approach and which I agree. And I really lo- love it to to come here and and talk about this. So I don't know if that is possible. To to achieve or probably not.
In itself, yes, it's 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 possible. Um I mean. We practically speaking, I don't think we've ever shared the uh the email addresses ambassadors uh use for signing up. Uh but that's mostly because we uh do all the communications uh through Discord.
Okay.
That would feel to me like a bit more natural candidate there than uh sharing e- email addresses, which we haven't shared before. Uh but maybe you also have some thoughts on this?
Yeah, thank you. Vani shared the same thing actually. That was to use the Discord, yeah, right?
Yeah, I was, well Discord, yes, but I'm also thinking that what you wanna do really is get ambassadors into. The deep funding platform really. So and you know, there's so many advantages to getting in there because you get notified of. RFPs and you know, funding rounds as they happen and there's lots of news and all that. So. I don't know, maybe we should just be encouraging core contributors here to go make an account if they haven't got one yet. But yeah, I mean, also, yeah, on Discord, definitely.
Yeah, um that 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 would be very, very much necessary. Like we are just trying to, uh okay, thank you. We won't spam the 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 channel, trust me. So Vani, I I think um what we are looking through is that we want to give every single person, as long as you have an account with deep funding. You'll be able to uh post anything related to AI. Web three blockchain, whatever trending or even though you want to share your personal, I want to share my personal life. Yeah, so it will be very possible. You know, we are just doing this uh at early stage as a responsibility from our end. As the marketing circle or perhaps people that will be onboarding as an earlier pioneer, so that when people, when we learn to the public. So people will come there and have some kind of things to engage with, like content to engage or interact with. And that is exactly what we're doing for now. Not necessarily that we want to uh focus on, update on RFP or whatever. No. People might, there might be some people that are not really interested in that RFP. People that are not interested in the rounds, or whatever the case may be. They just want to learn about what is happening in the AI ecosystem. So all of this content can come in, perhaps research paper, discussions and all of that. You want uh uh a lot of people to come in as experts, to come and discuss things like that on a platform. Yeah.
Um yes, Alfred, please.
Okay, um my question is, at the moment, can anybody there has a deep funding. Account already? Can they make posts on the social platform?
Definitely. I know, it's not restricted. As long, as far as you are listening to me now, you have that very advantage. You have the opportunity. You know, a lot of people can come on the website, they will just go through the new feature, they might not know what it's meant for. But because I'm telling you now and probably ignore it, but because I'm saying this now, y- you know what it's meant for. You can go there, you make your post. So it is not restricted. It is it is live already. It's live already. So we are just doing this, uh before we announce it to the general public of our community. We want to have some content there first. Alfred, you can go there now, sign up or you login and make your first post. It is very possible. Yes, exactly internally. Thank you, Ayio.
Okay, so from just understanding of what you just said, it means you are actively looking for. Um first time posters, the people that can put out content at moment. Depending when they'll be like, you know, um I am public announcement about that future, so they can come and. Already existing content on the platform.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, because the way, the old way it was sound was like, oh, this is kind of a street tech feature and we want to onboard ambassador first. Then after you guys are there, I know there's some progress and there's some content there you can open to the public. So that's why I wanted to clarify that at the moment, is it an open um platform? With anybody that has a deep funding account or it's closed? So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Well, that television, it's open.
Hmm that does make me wonder, um if there's any feedback, where could we best put that? Was it like?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. There is a a feature on the platform. I I don't know, let me. I I think there is a feature on the platform that. I was not aware of that, like I didn't know exactly where you, I I will have share my screen again. But there is a particular feature on the platform that uh allow you to send feedback. By hit the buttons and you'll be able to send a message to uh the developers from there. And we are still working on creating a structured uh Google form to collect feedback. Yes, we're working on that as well.
Okay, nice. Yeah, just making sure that if there's any feedback, we we do end up uh.
Exactly. Thank you.
The year feature in the profile section is not working. Okay.
That's fan- that's fantastic. Uh please, can you see um? Colin, please, can you see the uh the feedback button on the platform? Let me quickly find that and share eventually if it is possible.
Sure, sure, I'll do it in the feedback, no problem.
Okay.
Nice. Alright, I'm gonna have a better look around there. Um. Yeah, just making sure I did. Any further questions? Because right now is the time. And if not, uh well, I'd like to thank Abdul Basit for the for the introduction to the deep funding feed.
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity that was to share with you.
Cool. Alright, uh you have seven-ish more minutes uh on the slot and I I do have another um. Short and relatively concise topic I I do want to touch on, so. Yeah, thanks again and then uh we'll move on uh with that. Uh let me quickly. Screen share. Not really needed, I guess. Um. Seven overlays in the way of hitting the slideshow button. Training. Yeah, there we go. Uh yeah, basically, um I forget, um well, during last time, well. Um people kind of reluctantly agreed that it would be good to have a weekly session on uh BGI twenty five planning and our attendance there. And so far, that didn't happen. So I wanted to have a quick check on the room and I wanted to. Yeah, just looking at the available um spots in the in the calendar, I figured it would be decent at Friday thirteen UTC. And. Um yeah, I did want to call out um both Major Defi and Slate are attending from a deep funding circle um. Angle, let's say. I still need to talk to them and puzzle out um how busy they busy they are gonna be. But in theory, um we would have two ambassadors present just by virtue of them um. Uh attending for deep funding. Um yeah, it's a bit tricky right now because I really don't know. Maybe they have like a full schedule um. And no space to do anything, or maybe they actually do um, yeah, have availability and and um. Yeah, well, so so that's something I still need to check out. Um. But I just wanted to uh to to call that out. Um also in light of um brainstorming on how we can contribute to the um. And conference, for example, or perhaps have interviews on the floor, uh that kind of stuff. Uh we. Well, the the big issue there with with having people present um in person is is the budget side of things. As per usual, um with events and. Well, so this this them being there doesn't cost us any budget. That's basically where I was going with this. Um. So yeah, I did see one thumbs up. I don't hear anybody screaming that Friday thirteen UTC is a very bad idea, so I think I'll just go ahead and add it there. Another thumbs up. Nice. Okay, uh let's do that then. Um that's um in between the marketing uh guild uh and the writers' work group uh calls on Friday. Waiting one bit, saved. Yeah, it should be on the calendar now. Um I think. Yeah, that was basically like like mentioned last week uh to make that a weekly recurring call, pretty much up until um. Uh the conference is happening. Uh so let me put it to weekly. Alright, um yeah, then there's uh four more minutes on the slot for any potential open topics. If you happen to have any questions, any. Anything, basically, it's it's very open, um although somewhat time restricted, um but yeah. Ah, I see Guillermo found the feedback spreadsheet for the governance dashboard. Nice.
Yeah, so so I can use two minutes. Uh I'm gonna paste it here. So Dashboard is live, Slate. Uh beat the record for submitting a proposal. I think he was three minutes. So I guess we're gonna be just get used to it. Uh but still, a lot of improvements and a lot of things also to input and feature. So not only feedback. Um also later Focus Group, no, kind of, we talked this yesterday uh in Workgroup Sync. Um play with the AI assist, her name is Sarah, uh enjoy the ride. Um and yeah, input the full description of the report. In the description section, so she can really extract, well, we can extract all her uh potential. Um. And a big shout out to for to Colin to put in this spreadsheet together. Um first time I open it, to be honest. Uh so great stuff, uh Colin, really, really cool. Thanks for that.
Awesome.
Oh, sure, you're welcome. No problem.
Nice. Um alright, then I guess I will put a quick reminder to all the work group leads to um. Submit their um budget proposals and quarterly reports before tomorrow end of day. So you still have about uh, well, what is it? Um twenty five hours? A bit more, actually, twenty nine, let's say. Um yeah, with that, I do think we get to the conclusion of this time. Thanks all for being here and yeah, sharing your your time and insights and questions. And yeah, quick reminder for tomorrow, we do have um archive work group at uh twelve UTC. Followed by um education work group at fifteen UTC and that is then followed by uh Latam Guild at nineteen UTC. So yeah. Quite a lot going on and hope to see you on any of these calls and if not, um we'll talk on Discord. Thanks all.
Thank you, Peter. Bye.
Alpita, gracias.
Thanks, Peter. Take care, everybody. Bye bye.